All right, good evening, everyone. We're calling our August sixth meeting to order. We have a tobacco policy in place. There's no smoking within one hundred feet of any school building. Please rise for the pledge. District Clerk, will you please call roll? Trustee Knunson?
Here.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Here.
Trustee Jerome? Trustee Goodrich?
Here.
Trustee Hemingway Lynch?
Here.
Trustee Ramondo?
Here.
Trustee Bishop?
Here.
Thank you. Thank you. So we'll start our meeting off tonight with a presentation. Assistant Superintendent for Business Monica Leclair. And Director of Facilities and Operations Kyle Harges will provide us with an update on capital projects.
Thank you so much. So we have, we did this presentation because questions came up. Kind of where are we with capital projects? Where are we going with capital projects? What is a capital project? Why do capital projects take so long? Why do capital projects cost so much money? So while I won't be able to answer every single one of your questions. We are going to walk through a little bit about capital projects, what we're doing. How we do things and kind of where we think we're going in the future. So first off, just a quick overview on capital projects. So as hopefully all of you, but definitely most of you know. Prior to any designs, projects have to be approved by the voters. So once the design, once after the design, after the approval. Then it gets submitted to the Office of Facilities Planning. Currently, there is a eighteen to twenty week timeline for architecture review. And thirty to thirty-two weeks for engineering review, and those are consecutive. So if you take the highest number of both, you're talking a year. I will tell you that hasn't always been the case. It has gotten worse. They are having staffing issues. There is a lot of projects in the pipeline. Mostly backlog because of the COVID relief money. And so that's kind of some of the reasons why they're having issues. So once it's approved by SED, and we can't do anything until it's approved by SED because SED then gives us our building permits. Once that happens, then the work gets done. We create the bid documents and the bids are released to the public. Municipal law states that the school must accept the lowest, except responsible bidder. You might say, oh, what does it mean to be responsible? You pretty much have to be on this list to not be responsible, and there aren't a lot of companies on that list. Another, one of the reasons why the costs are so high is schools are required to follow what's known as Wicks Law. Which means that when we bid a project that's over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have to visit, if it includes any of those five things. Plumbing, general construction, heating, ventilation, air conditioning, and electrical. Has to be bid to separate contractors. So try to imagine you're building a house. You hire a general contractor. You have to hire, you personally have to hire a separate electrician, a separate plumber, a separate guy to do your HVAC. And who's going to manage it all? So that's why generally schools get construction managers because, as you all know, our facilities director is busy doing other things. The other thing that affects the cost of projects is called prevailing wage. So all contractors and subcontractors have to pay their workers according to a wage schedule. That's established by the state for capital projects that are considered public projects. Schools, municipalities. It's all public information. If you're curious, you can actually Google prevailing wage New York State and you will find out. I can tell you, for example. I looked up electrician, journeyman electrician. Prevailing wage for a project under two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is about forty-six dollars and something an hour. Over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is like fifty-something dollars an hour. So, and it varies. There are hundreds of different levels for prevailing wage. And that's the school and the architect's responsibility then to review our payment applications. Make sure that all the contractors are paying prevailing wage. So as you can tell, it's not an easy process. So I will have Kyle start by discussing our first project.
So one of the current projects at the high school is we're getting a new generator. And that's the construction that's going on out in front by Central. And that was?
So that was, as you can see, SED project zero zero one zero three three. So every building has a different first set of numbers. And then the zero three three means it was the thirty-third project for the high school that has been approved since projects have been done at the high school. You can see the voter authorization date, when the plans were submitted to SED. And when they were approved by SED, and you can see there the timeline wasn't all that great. But if you look at the bottom, it was also funded a hundred percent through COVID relief. So they were doing, they were doing their best to push through COVID projects. This project has a cost of nine hundred and six thousand, six hundred dollars. And construction will happen and finish hopefully by September thirtieth of this year. And then if you look at the next page, you get a few pictures that Kyle and BBL were kind enough to take for, for everyone. And if you have questions about specific projects as we go along, it's probably easier to ask at that point.
A quick question?
Yes.
How does that nine hundred and six thousand compare to the number that the voters authorized on six twenty-one, twenty-two?
So because it was COVID money, the voters didn't actually authorize that one. It is actually very, very, very rare to have projects that are funded through grants. The, this was a specific pool of money that schools were given that were supposed to help with. Ventilation and health and safety. So we were able to get the generator put through because it was considered health and safety. So if power goes out, we had a place because there really is no other place in this area for people to come if the power goes out. So the school can be like now the hub for the community if power goes out in Boyceville, which as we know, power tends to go out. Sometimes.
Another project that we have going on is behind the building.
Excuse me, Kyle. I'm sorry. Sorry to interrupt, but I saw trustee Lynch had a hand up.
Oh.
Thank you. It's not, well, I'll just ask, was it, is it the first time that the school has had a generator? Is that what you're saying? And so we would, we would invite the public to come if there was an emergency?
So we have been, and I'm not sure if we currently are, but we probably will then be in the future a Red Cross shelter. Because we have showers and everything in, in the gymnasium. So this will obviously make it easier for us to be a Red Cross shelter.
Thank you.
Another project going on at the high school, middle school is behind the building. We're doing some drainage improvements. We're adding two rear sidewalks off the back of the building. So there was not a sidewalk coming out of the back of the math wing. We're putting one there. We're putting one off the cafeteria patio. And those sidewalks will get used for emergency exits drills. Also that retaining wall that was falling down behind math. We pulled that out of there and we're fixing the concrete back there.
So then if you look at the next page, you can see pictures of that as well. So this has SED project zero zero one zero three four. So this project was submitted and approved by SED right after the generator project. And you can see by the voter authorization date, when the plans were submitted and when the plans were approved. This one went very quickly, but if you think about it, this is all. This is all landscaping type work, and there was no engineering review required. So it was purely architectural review. So that's why this one went faster. And this one was funded through the Capital Reserve at a cost of approximately two hundred and forty thousand, three hundred dollars.
We're also repairing the tennis courts. We're repairing the cracks. Resurfacing the courts, painting the courts, new dents, new nets and fencing. And we're also striping it for tennis and pickleball.
Yes, the striping actually has just been completed. It looks very nice. We are still waiting for the nets. So no one can play just yet, but it's getting there. And now this was the money that the board had approved to use the repair reserve to fix. So the hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And again, work being done this summer. So, and you can see the, the pretty pictures. I especially like the one that has the mountain in the background. That's always one of my favorites. We try to get as many of those pictures in as we can.
Next project at the middle school, high school. We're repairing or replacing parts of the roof on this building. We're going to renovate the middle school gym and a bunch of classrooms. We're gonna upgrade the home and careers classroom. We're gonna replace the ADA lift that's by the cafeteria. We're gonna repave the tennis court parking lot, and we're gonna upgrade the electrical service in the math and science wing.
So this is the project that the voters approved last May for the eight point eight million dollars. These were the plans that were submitted in October and were just approved by SED in June. We were lucky enough because we did get the SED approval prior to the end of the school year that we were able to do the roof work this summer. So that's approximately one, one point six million. But if you remember, eight hundred thousand of it was coming out of the repair reserve. Eight hundred thousand was for repair. Eight hundred thousand roughly was for replacement. And this will be funded out of the Capital Reserve. So this part of eight point eight million dollars is seven point five seven two million. Because as you remember, it was split into two parts, this part and then the security vestibule. And the, the overhang, what were we calling that? The canopy? Student pavilion, that's what it was, is, is, makes up the remainder of that money. So you can see, next page, pretty pictures of the roof. Yeah, see, and this is, this is part of the problem, you know, it's like, we have to do this work. But the pictures aren't as pretty as when you do a classroom or when you do the tennis courts. But, you know, this, this is, this is stuff that has to get done. So. Yes?
So first of all, this, this whole report is great. Awesome job by both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So just so I understand. So this is seven point five million. How does that show up in the budget pie chart?
It doesn't. This, because this comes out of the Capital Reserve. So this literally goes, so this is like our savings account. And we're paying it out of the savings account. It does not hit our operation budget at all.
So it doesn't?
Doesn't get taxed. There's no taxes involved. The taxes have already been raised for this money. This is money that, as we had left over, and we, I mean, you can say that, thank, you know, how do you say thank you COVID? But the COVID relief funding allowed us to do so much more. That it left other monies that we had thought we would need that we could put aside for that purpose.
And my understanding is the, the reserve money can only be used for repairs? Is that true?
So that's a different reserve. So that, there's a capital reserve and there's a repair reserve. So there are two separate reserves.
Thank you.
Okay, at the middle school, high school. This work will happen next summer, but it's been designed, it came back from SED. Okay, so we're doing a security vestibule down here at the loading dock entrance. And we're doing a lunch patio pavilion outside the cafeteria to replace the tents.
So this is our number zero zero one zero three five. As we said, it was part of the eight point eight million that was approved last year. Oh, did you have a question, Sarah? Oh, finish, okay. SED approval, of course, when I did this, it hadn't been approved. Now thankfully, it's been approved. So this is of the eight point eight million. You saw the other slide had seven point five. So this is the remainder of that eight point eight million, and again, completely funded out of Capital Reserve. So now we will go on to the other buildings.
Thank you so much, Monica. I was just curious, how much, what goes into the scheduling of these kinds of projects? I see that you've got it slated for summer. What are the factors that go into how you schedule different projects? Whether, for example, you know, obviously some of them will be more disruptive than others to the day-to-day school, but.
So it, yeah, so it does. It depends on the, it depends on the project, first of all. So for example, the generator could have been done pretty much anytime because it's all outside work. But it can be, when is, you know, when, when can we get the supplies? Like, when, you know, can we, can we, sometimes we'll bid out a job, but the supply chain is so long. And that's what happened to some of these projects. Supply chain was so long that we couldn't do it that summer. We had to wait till the following summer. Doors is another, I mean, it's, it's, you know, we work with Stefan from BBL. And he does a wonderful job of helping us kind of, because he knows, he knows, you know, he knows the players, he knows the vendors. You know, he's, that's his job is to know this, you know, and so we rely on him and CPL a lot to, to help us when it comes to the timeline.
May I add?
You may add.
The other thing that sometimes delays the actual work is. With the timeline between the design and estimate and voter approval of a project. And the actual, all of the drawing and then stated review and stated approval. By the time you bid it out, sometimes those prices that you originally anticipated are no longer actual viable costs. And so if the bids come in higher than your budget, we have to rebid it. And we have to refine the scope, take some things out and rebid it. So sometimes that actually delays us a year. In, in some cases, that is.
The case here with the summer twenty twenty-five work?
Well, no, that was SED. We, see, here's the thing, we haven't bid that yet.
Okay.
So we have to see when we bid it. I mean, we're hopeful that we put enough of a cushion in. And then you do kind of these things that are called alternates. So that you hope it fits in the project, but if it doesn't, it doesn't affect the whole project. A good example of a project, and, and these are things you also learn over time. The project that really taught us the most was the, the new science classroom. That took three years. Because it was first, because remember I said seven hundred and fifty thousand, you had to do Wicks Law? Well, it was one classroom, so everyone thought it would be less than seven hundred and fifty thousand. So we only bid it for one general contractor. It came in at over a million. So then we had to bid it out, we had to split it and do five contractors. Well, then it came up even higher because you're working with five contractors. So then we had to reduce the scope and put it out to bid again. It was, yeah, it was a nightmare. But we finally got it done. It just took longer than we thought.
Thanks for sharing. Thank you.
Do you have anything to add to that, Kyle?
All right, one of the projects going on right now at Bennett is the abatement and replacement of some of the bad floor tiles.
Yeah, so, so one of the things you'll notice is that some of these projects are relatively small. So this one is, is slated to be sixty-nine thousand. But if you look at the SED project number, it's oh oh two. So Bennett has the number oh oh two, whereas the high school had the number oh oh one. If you put together a project and it affects all four buildings. You actually have four projects because every building has its own project number. So while you can bid them as a group, you know, us in the business office, we have to close four different projects. So it gets a little, it gets a little confusing for us, but you know, we're good at that. But, so this one is very similar, as you can see with the voter authorization, the dates of the plans submitted and the approval is very simple. Well, it's exactly the same as the other one because they were done together. And this is also the project that's being done this summer and also funded by Capital Reserve.
Just quick question about this one? So I just noticed with a couple of them that this one, SED approval came back very quickly. About a year and a half ago. And it, we, it took eighteen months or whatever to actually schedule it. And I'm wondering, was this one a supply chain or what was the issue with this one? This, this seems fairly small and simple.
This, I believe, because, so this project was a combined, it was combined Bennett, Woodstock, and high school and Phoenisha. Bennett was getting floors, high school was getting back there. Phoenisha and Woodstock were supposed to get univents that were being paid from the COVID money. The bids came in so high, we could only afford to do the, we had to rebid it and do only have them do the univents for Woodstock. So, because those, the ones in Woodstock were in worse shape than the ones in Phoenisha. So this was a bidding, a bidding and, yeah, issue.
All right. Some of the projects going on right now, Woodstock. The exterior door replacement. We replaced the gymnasium ramp that was deteriorated. And we're getting a new security window for the vestibule.
So as you can see, this one has SED project zero zero nine zero one six. And this was, was authorized in May of twenty-one. Plans were submitted in twenty-two. SED approval was January of twenty-three. So this part of the project is five hundred and sixty-four thousand, and this, again, being done this summer. And this one was funded through the twenty-one, twenty-two general fund appropriations. So if you, if you ever went back to the budget newsletter for the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. You will find in there, like a little sidebar about, you know, again, we know how we, we use five hundred or seven hundred and fifty thousand for transfer to capital. That's what this was used for. And I think there's pretty pictures for that one, too. Yes. So just, Kyle had made the comment, so if you look at the old doors versus the new doors. You might say they look exactly the same. But if you kind of look a little closer at the old doors, you can kind of see there are those handlebars that kind of go down. That have a space in between them. And for safety issues, if you think about it, it'd be very easy for somebody to put a chain around it and block people from going out. The new doors don't have that. So it's really a huge safety factor to do those doors this way.
And the old doors had a gap down the center where somebody could stick something in and pull on the bar and open the doors. The old doors had the closers down in the concrete, which were very troublesome. Because the doors wouldn't open, the doors wouldn't close. And we had these same doors in Woodstock and Phoenisha. Another project going on in Woodstock. Abatement and replacement of the floor tiles. And replacing the original heating units that were in the building. So that was all the classrooms in the middle hall, the back wall, and the cafeteria heating unit. When I talk about the floor tiles, we did a district-wide floor tile project. And these were the floor tiles that were coming up and causing my department aggravation. So we picked some from every building.
Kyle's the best at doing what we can with what we can. And as you can see, this one now has SED project number zero zero nine zero two oh. So first came the door project, and then now came the floor tile and heating vents. And this one was funded, as it says, through a combination of COVID and Capital Reserve. And this one at a cost of a little over two million dollars. But if you've been to Woodstock, it's, it is, it is moving along. I'm always amazed at how quickly it can go from looking like there's no way they're going to get it together. To all of a sudden, you're like, oh my gosh, the school's ready to be opened. The next page, you can kind of see a nice, pretty picture of our new univents and kind of a, so, and last but.
And then projects in Phoenisha. So exterior doors, because they're very similar to Woodstock, and they were troublesome in a security issue. And replacing some of the concrete footings under the doors when they're replacing the doors.
So Phoenisha has its own building number. It's zero one one. So this is zero one zero one seven. It had the voter authorization in May of twenty-one. It had the voter authorization in May of twenty one. Plans were submitted in twenty two, SED approval in January of twenty three. The cost of this project's a little over three hundred thousand. Again, construction's happening this summer and this one was also funded through the general fund appropriation. So when we did this project, we, we did it as, as I said, partially through general fund and then partially through the grants, so.
And then in Phoenisha, similar to the other buildings, abatement and replacement of the floor tiles that were coming up or in bad shape.
And as you can see, this had the same thing with voter authorization, plans, specs submitted, SED approval, a cost of three hundred and ninety one thousand. Again, construction this summer and funded through COVID relief and Capital Reserve. So as you can see, when I kind of go through a summary of our current projects, that currently this summer, we have eight projects in four buildings totaling three point seven million dollars, being funded by Capital Reserve, COVID grants, general fund and repair reserve. So thank you so much, Kyle. So next year, we will have two projects in one building totaling a little over eight point zero six million. Because if you remember from my previous slides, some of it was, some of the eight point eight million dollar funding was, is being done this year on the roof. So eight point oh six to, to play with next year. And that is all coming from Capital Reserve. So I don't know what happened to my title on the next slide. I don't have one either. So this is kind of an understanding of, how do we know what, how do we know where to put our money? Like, how do we know what needs to be done? So we are educators, facilities people, business people, but we're not architects and we're not engineers and I sometimes can't figure out which way to plug in a plug, so. So districts are required to conduct what's called a building condition survey, the BCS. It used to be every school had to do it the exact same year. Which finally, what they realized, of course, it took them a while, was if everybody's doing a building condition survey the same year, then everybody's putting projects in the same year. Because you do your project after you do a building condition survey. So finally, in about twenty twenty, they realized, you know, if we stagger it. So finally, it's staggered. So our last building condition survey was done in twenty twenty one, which means our next one will be done in twenty twenty six. Only buildings that are occupied have to have this building condition survey. But every major system and component must be investigated and signed off by a licensed architect or an engineer. So as you can tell, it's, it's a lot of work to, and to do every, even every five years. But it is very detailed. They are on our website. If you really want to dig down and dirty, I have hard copies in my office. So the reason they do this is so when, when a district submits plans to facilities planning, they're looking at your building condition survey. If you're going to do a project in the high school, let's say you want to do turf field, great. But you also better do that roof that's been on your building condition survey for the last ten years. Because they're not going to approve a project for a turf field if your roof's leaking. So same thing, we had an issue with not having bathrooms in this building that were ADA accessible. Now, the district was grandfathered in, all school districts are. But SED also said, next time you do a project, you better do those bathrooms. So we did. We also get some aid reimbursement, forty one cents a square foot. So we do get a little bit of money back when we do a building condition survey. But it costs roughly, I'm trying to remember what the last one cost, sixty thousand? About sixty thousand dollars to do a building condition survey. No, no, for the district.
Quick question. So twenty twenty six, do you know about when they would start that work and when it would be completed in twenty twenty six?
So you actually have a, they actually kind of, they do it, so it has to be completed prior to December of twenty twenty six. But you could start it as early as September of twenty twenty five. So we've always kind of tried to, because it's, you know, you, because you're doing so much investigating that, and you obviously don't want to disrupt the students either. So, you know, sometimes we have to wait for the break, things like that over the summer. I think the last time they did it over the summer, which is a standard time, but, you know, it also, because you, the, the nice thing is we can kind of play with the funding, depending on how our budget is, if we have more in twenty five or twenty six. So that's why they kind of give us a little bit more leeway. So, so Kyle will tell you kind of what we have completed from the, or are completing from the twenty twenty one building condition survey.
All right, so here's some of the things that are completed or in progress. We did some emergency and exit lighting in this building. Like I said, we're working on the retaining wall out back, the drainage in the sidewalks. We're doing a little bit of roofing. All along, we've been doing asbestos abatement, which also includes the asbestos floor tile. We've been doing some classroom doors. We did some field drainage and we're fixing the tennis courts. At Bennett, we did manage to replace the HVA system in the gym. We did some asbestos abatement, including some flooring. And some of the flooring that we worked on was just regular vinyl flooring that was coming up. Woodstock. We put in the new concrete gym ramp. We're doing the exterior doors. We're doing some more asbestos abatement, the tile replacement and the air handling unit in the cafeteria and in the classrooms I spoke about earlier. In Phoenisha, we got the radon mitigation done in the rooms that needed it. We're working on the exterior doors. We're working on some asbestos abatement, removing the hallway carpet over the asbestos tile. And also floor tile replacement. All right, here's some of the things that were on the BCS that were priority one. That's recommended that we take care of. All right, rehab three science rooms. Install a concrete sidewalk to connect the tennis court parking lot to the school entrance. So nobody gets run over up on the west end. The catch basins in the parking lots are failing. Along with that, drainage. Replacing, there's a bunch of asphalt to replace around here. Replace the concrete curb and the sidewalk out front, as well as the lid to the well that's out front. Remove and install new panels and railing on the concrete ramp. All right, new drainage swale on the southern side of the road. That's the road coming down from Bennett High School side, fix the drainage. Repair and replace the columns at the canopy in the back. Repair, replace the twenty eight hall roof and the brick because the roof doesn't have the right pitch, the water runs off the front of the building. More asbestos tile replacement. Replace the ceilings in the main hall, twenty eight hall, middle school. Recommend an elevator access up to the orchestra room on the top floor behind us. More emergency and exit lighting. And replace more of the original main switchboards, branch panels and transformers. There's still some left in this building that are original to the building.
So as you can see, in twenty twenty one dollars, that work was projected to be nine million. So I'm sure you can imagine it's going to be more. And these are just the priority ones.
Excuse me, we have a question over here.
Oh, sure, I'm sorry.
So just to back up a little bit. So I was looking for where, we did a lot of renovating of the classrooms. Is, I didn't see that on the list or I missed?
So a lot of that is the, goes, goes to the ceilings, goes to the flooring. And the asbestos. So it's, it's, it's kind of like, so because we didn't have the money to do the entire building, we, we took what money we had and we were doing a few classrooms at a time. So we're doing, so when it says replace ceiling system, that's thirty thousand square feet. We maybe replaced, you know, five thousand square feet. And, you know, like last summer, maybe next summer, another five, you know, so we're kind of piecemealing it. Because we don't have the money to do it all.
So, you know, when I go around and I see, because I'm on the facilities committee, when I see the before and after on these classrooms, it, it looks like a brand new classroom to me. I mean, the lighting's different, I mean, it's, it's beautiful. So it's, it's hidden here.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure everybody understands.
So that's why it's, it's, you know, we're, we're chipping away, I guess. It's really what we're trying to, trying to show you is there's still a lot to do, but we're chipping away as we can because in order to fix everything all at once, it's a lot of money. And years ago, when we were trying to figure out what to do, people, we were still struggling with, well, which buildings are going to be what and how are we going to do this? And then we kind of, as a, as an administration, as, as a, as a facilities committee, said, well, we know we're going to be in this building. This building will stay. This will always be our high school. Can't go anywhere else. So that's when we made the decision to use what money we had set aside in our Capital Reserve to start at least fixing up some of this building. With the understanding that we still needed a long term plan, but we didn't want to wait anymore. We wanted to really start doing something. And I think it was, part of it was when we finished that new science room, we kind of realized that, wow, when you get one nice room, so if we can do a couple of rooms a summer and then, and that's really kind of why we started doing it that way. I mean, ideally, you know, when you want efficiency and economy of scale, you do a big project. You borrow money like when you renovate your house and then you pay it over time versus hiring one guy one summer for this and hiring another guy another summer. You might get the same guy, you might not get the same guy. The tile that you bought last year might not be the tile that's available this year. So that's kind of, but, you know, we didn't have that luxury, so that's kind of why we were doing it this way.
So as you know, I'm, I'm big on the science classrooms. So one of the things, we, a number of us went, went to the Rural School Association Conference recently. And one of the things that I learned there is the, if you're going to upgrade the science classroom, the way they teach high school science classes, biology, physics or sciences, so on, is different than what it was twenty, thirty years ago when these classrooms were probably built. So I guess my question is, how do we just, and the new classrooms have to be designed for the new way they teach science. So how does that process work? Is the teachers that teach the, the classes get involved with the design of the classroom?
Oh, absolutely. We absolutely get the teachers involved. But then I think it's, it's, it's kind of a two-pronged approach. You know, you ask the teachers, you know, what would you like to see? But then you also go visit schools that have upgraded their science rooms. You get ideas. The architects have obviously designed plenty of classrooms where they, you know, they, they have their own kind of group that they know, you know, what's been going on. And we ask them all the time, I know that, you know, what are, what are some things that we should be looking at?
So obviously, it takes longer to design the architecture and engineering for these science classrooms. So what's this, how, what's the long, how long does that take? I mean, it's not your normal classroom.
I don't know how long the last one took, but I didn't think it was that long.
It, it didn't take that long last time for the design, but to your point, the architects came in. I think they had, they may have started with maybe six different design concepts. And we absolutely had the science faculty come down and have their input. And, you know, they were very much driving the design.
Thank you.
All right, some of the priority one items on the building condition survey for Bennett. Clean the watershed around the CMP entrance. There's a big drain pipe up there behind the Bennett playground, which catches all the water that runs down through the woods. It just needs to be all cleaned out up behind Bennett and something that's maintainable. Replace the windows above the gym. These are all the different color windows that are above the gym. Some of them are broken, the clock is missing around them. Doing more asbestos tile replacement. Like I said before, we did the gym hallway because that one was bad. We need to update the fire system, update the PA system. The top of the chimney is falling apart, needs to be repointed and reset. We need to replace the domestic water heater that makes the hot water for the dishwasher because the Department of Health comes in here, they want to see a hundred and eighty degree water. And the boiler has trouble making the hot water up there. This will also cool off the cafeteria because the big boilers aren't running during the fall and the spring. We also need to get the fuel tank out of the ground.
Superintendent, do you have a question or comment?
I was just realizing a little while ago, did we not replace part of the roof at Bennett as well? In that hallway by the gym?
Yes, we did.
I don't, I didn't see that on this list.
Nope, you're absolutely right. That was two years ago? Yeah, that was, we did, yep.
We did that before the floor tiles.
Well, when the engineer walked around with me, I said, the project's out to bid, don't put it on the BCS.
Okay.
Oh, that's probably, okay.
And that's why the gym hallway tile was bad.
I know. That's what made me think of it. Thank you.
Yes, one, one thing leads to another. Yeah, Sarah?
Thank you. Another question, just, you know, and those of us who are layman to this kind of work, I'm just curious about how we help people understand, like, the safety impact of these decisions, right? So I'm thinking about a fire system or whatever, you know, how do you start to prioritize? All of these things are very important to the health and safety of the kids. Just curious how you talk about it in those terms, in terms of the priorities that you have to, have to make just given finite dollars.
Well, I mean, at this point, it's still working, but it's, costs a lot to repair. So if the fire, if the fire alarm system isn't working, you have to have somebody on what they call a twenty four hour watch. You literally have to have somebody in the building for twenty, like twenty four hours a day. So it's something that you want to fix before it fails. So that's why, that's why it's, that's why it's on here. I mean, it hasn't failed yet, thankfully. It is aged. So a lot of these, it's, you've got preventative maintenance. You, you want it to be preventative so that you're not stuck with an emergency because it's easier to fix it before it breaks than to have to rush around and you're going to pay more. As we all know, when your oil burner goes in a February, it's a lot more expensive than if your oil burner goes in the summer. So I think it's just a conversation. I think most people understand it. You know, and really, it's when it, when we, when we finally do go out for a project, it's really, it's talking, it's, it's, so there's always a lot of pictures involved. Because again, I think, I think a picture says a thousand words. You know, we can show you his pictures of things and people be like, you still use that? That's your fire alarm? Like even our PA system, I mean, people don't understand how, it's, it's, it's pretty ancient, but it works. It's, you know, it's not the best, but it works. So it's like, it's one of those things, at some point, it will fail. So it's about fixing, you know, it's about replacing it before it fails. And so we, so in twenty twenty one dollars, all of this work was just under one point six million.
The other issue with the fire alarm and the PA system is those are older systems and parts are hard to get. The PA system, the new circuit boards in there, I think we bought the last one, used from Duchess Tal. All right, in Woodstock, some priority one items. Install the backflow preventer. That's for the water that comes into the building to make sure if the town of Woodstock loses water pressure, that they don't suck all the water out of the building. Paving back by the kitchen, also replacing the sewer main under that paving and the storm main. Regrade the road, road shoulder out front. Fill in the exposed drainage pipe. More repointing and flashing above the windows. That's the brick. There's another set of steps that need to be replaced back by the gym. The spline ceilings. Replace the doors. Now, the fourteen new classroom doors are getting replaced as part of the heating project, but there's still more to do. Right now, we're doing the air handling unit in the cafeteria, replace the fire alarm system. Upgrades the bathrooms to be ADA compliant. Restore the roofing and re-pitch it in the back of the building. Similar to why I said to high school, because the water runs right off the back of the building. because the water runs right off the back of the building.
So all of that projected cost in twenty twenty-one dollars was four point, little over four point two million. So, the last slide that I have for you is kind of what, what would a tentative project?
Excuse me, Monica, we have one more question.
I'm too fast.
So we, we got all these Priority One projects. So, it looks like a total somewhere around fifteen million total?
Yeah, but remember, that's twenty twenty-one dollars. That was in twenty twenty-one dollars.
Oh, good point. So would that come out of the budget?
No. That would have to be a, that would have to be a, a bond. We would have to borrow that money.
Have to do a bond on that. Okay.
We don't have that.
All right. And what's the timeframe, do you think, for this stuff?
So, the next slide is kind of what a tentative timeline might look like. So, in looking at where we are now, we would want to do a space utilization study. So we want to, we would want to look at our spaces that we currently have, and what do we really need? How many classrooms? If we're going to move Woodstock here, what size, you know, gym, what size cafeteria? I mean, really look at our spaces. Look at our spaces here at the high school, too. You know, I think, it's, it's, it's always important to kind of see what you have before you see what you need. So that would be our first step. Then we would establish what those, what the components of a project would look like, and what the general cost would be. Now, you're not going to go into, you're not going to go into too much detail, because, A, that costs, you're going to pay the architects a lot of money to go into more detail, but you want to kind of come up with some ideas of, okay, we need, I'm going to totally make this up, so do not, you know, hold me to it. We need five extra classrooms, two hundred square feet more in the gym, and a hundred and square feet more in the library. Okay, what's that look like? So the architects are like, well, you know, you can go up, you can go out, you can, I mean, they're, they're the experts. So they will give us some conceptual drawings. And then, once they had, once we've kind of had a chance to review those conceptual drawings, and people are like, oh, I like that, or I don't like that. What if we did something like, can we do this? Can we do that? And we visit other schools. What have other schools done? How have other schools done a, a, you know, a single campus? So if you look at the timeline, we're looking at about six months. So, that's, that's a pretty good amount of time to come up with kind of the meat of what is it this district wants to do. Once we do that, then the board would adopt a resolution. Okay, we know it's going to be, you know, X amount of, amount of millions of dollars. We're going to put a bond to the voters. And, you know, we're going to put, we're going to, then we put it out there, we put a newsletter out, we have meetings. I mean, we should be having, more than likely have meetings all along. None of this should ever be a surprise. And I don't think this district has ever done that. So, and then we'll do the project vote the same time we do the budget vote. That's very common. People are already coming out to vote on the budget, they'll vote on the project. We've done that before here as well. And then, then, then project design starts. And if you look at the timeline, we have just over a year for project design, which is a very, very healthy amount of time, because it allows us to do two things. A, if the vote doesn't pass in in May, well, we can go out for, we can say, okay, maybe we do an exit survey. What did they not like? Okay, so then we take the community's thoughts, and we're like, okay, let's change it. Well, you know, they don't, it was too much money. Okay, well, let's downsize it. What can we downsize? How can we, how can we change it? And then we can go out for another vote in maybe November, October, November. Still gives us plenty of time in this four-hundred-day timeframe to do a project design, assuming that it passes the second time. Then we would send it to SED. Of course, given the last, my, my first slide, two hundred, two hundred days might not be enough. I'm hoping by then, maybe they'll, they'll have kind of gone up a little. And then, you know, we send it to SED for approval. And then, and then we do the work for bidding, and then we have two summers of construction. So it gives us summer of twenty-seven and summer of twenty-eight for a September one, twenty twenty-eight opening, for whatever the project may be. So that is actually a very healthy timeline. It, it has flexibility built in pretty much in, in a number of these areas. You know, we can shorten some. We can lengthen some if need be. But if we're, if we tell ourselves, okay, you know, let's, you know, and I think the goal was a twenty twenty-eight, you know, so, so that's the thought process.
So, just to be clear here, so, the Priority One things that are in the, the BCS report, that would be commingled with the necessary capital improvements for the centralized campus?
Yes.
For the long-term plan, that would allow Woodstock to be closed. So that'll be one proposition all mixed together?
So you can do it as one, or you can do it as two. You can say, okay, um, let me see if I can come up with an example. So, let's say that a school district really needed their boiler replaced, but they also wanted a new auditorium. So they may say, okay, Proposition One is, we're going to borrow money to do the, the, to do the new boiler. Proposition Two is, we're going to borrow money to do the auditorium. However, we can't do Proposition Two unless Proposition One passes as well. The idea being that you get your, your must-haves before your would-be-nice. It's almost like saying, okay, I'm going to do the, you know, the roofs and the boilers before I do the turf field.
So.
And then you let the voters decide.
Yeah. My, my problem as a trustee is we have to be fiscally responsible.
Right. So that's why you let the voters decide.
It's very diff, when things are all mixed together, you know, in trying to figure out whether it's going to be fiscally responsible to do a centralized campus and close Woodstock, if that's mixed together with other items, it's going to be hard for me as a trustee to, to figure that out. Does that make sense, or do you understand what I'm saying?
No, it does. Unfortunately, there still needs to be work done on this building. It's, if, it's more efficient, and you're going to get a bigger cost savings if you bid the entire thing to one contractor, one general contractor, one plumber. If you're doing two projects, you're going to have two general contractors, a general contractor up here, a general contractor down here, a plumber up there, a plumber down here. And they might be different plumbers, and they might be different electricians, and you're going to be paying more money.
I, I can appreciate that, and I knew you were going to say that, right? Rightfully so, right? I'm just saying, it's not going to make my job easy as a trustee. And it's not going to make the voters' job easy, because they're going to have to figure this out to, to vote on this. And they, I looked at the Sagerties plan that they had for closing one of their elementary schools. It was very detailed-oriented. It was broken out. And maybe we can have one proposition, but maybe it would be good to document the pros and cons of each thing separately. I don't know. I don't know how we, how, how we do this, and how do we get the information so that we can make good fiscal responsibility.
Well, that's why hopefully we have six months to figure it out.
Thank you.
Any other trustees have questions? Emily? No? No. No. Okay, great. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. And if you know anybody in the community that's been dying to play pickleball, it should be up and running pretty soon.
So, I am concerned about the weather, and, and there is a prediction of heavy downpours with flooding, road flooding. And so I am asking the folks who travel the farthest to leave whenever they are ready. And that would be, yes, both of our Assistant Superintendents who live out of town. Okay. Next on our agenda is acceptance of the minutes. The Board of Education hereby accepts the minutes of the July second, twenty twenty-four meeting. May I have a first? Trustee Lynch, second. Trustee Knutson? Can I make a, a suggestion that we do not do a roll-call voting tonight, that we just do all in favor, all opposed? Okay. To save time, and we're, we're watching the screen. All in favor of accepting the minutes? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Superintendent will report district news.
Good evening. Some of this will be repetitive for the board, but I thought it was worth sharing with the public as well. So we are participating through Bosse's in a grant that will focus broadly on integration and preparation for artificial intelligence in schools by building an artificial intelligence integration community across Ulster and Sullivan Counties. With this community, our Bosse's will aim to provide professional learning and propose a collaborative effort to develop innovative projects that leverage AI to enhance student learning while mitigating the risks of over-reliance on these tools. The proposal that they have submitted is to bring together secondary educators, so grades nine through twelve, across disciplines, who are interested in being at the forefront of learning, building, and integrating AI into their classrooms and programs. All materials and lessons created through the grant will be accessible through a common repository that will be built as part of the program. So their hope is to begin this year with a cohort of twenty to thirty educators from across the county, and then add cohorts each of the three years of the grant. So the work will officially kick off this school year and continue through June of twenty twenty-seven. Exciting news, we are partnering also through Bosse's with other districts in Ulster County to apply for the New York State Department of Agriculture and Markets Initiative. So to incentivize school districts to use more New York state farm products, this initiative increases the reimbursement schools receive for lunches from five point nine cents per meal to twenty-five cents per meal for any district that ensures their school lunches are made up of at least thirty percent eligible New York-produced and processed products. And so our school lunch director, Christine Downs, has submitted the required information to Bosse's, and it is being reviewed to ensure that we meet that required thirty percent before they submit the application. We think we do, but we want to make sure. So we now have a social media post up to alert our community that there is the opportunity to help shape the fiscal future of New York State Foundation aid funding. You may be aware, a state-ordered study of the formula used to determine every district's state aid is underway. The researchers at the Rockefeller Institute of Government have been selected to perform the study, and as part of their work, they want to hear from community stakeholders. It is vitally important that members of small communities such as Ontario have their voices heard about the need for a fair and phased-in approach to any proposed changes. Any drastic reductions to the level of funding for us could be catastrophic for our students and others across the state if school board members are forced to make budget reductions in response to a sudden loss of state aid. You all may recall, the governor had proposed to enact the formula as it exists now, and to reduce our foundation aid by a total of six million dollars over two years. Our full foundation aid is only seven million, and we cannot shift that burden to the taxpayers. We would not want to, but also, we are operating under the limitations of the tax levy limit. The deadline for submitting feedback is Friday, September sixth, at essentially midnight. Anyone can submit written comments on the Rockefeller Institute website, or submit a request to register to speak at a public hearing. The hearings closest to us are happening on Thursday. Actually, I'm not sure that Lawrence in central New York is technically close to us, but there's another one on August fourteenth in Gilderlin. I am unable to attend either of those events, but I have already submitted, submitted written comments, and I know Ms. Leclerc has pre-registered to speak at Gilderlin and is waiting to hear. A number of us this week had the opportunity to attend the Mid Hudson School Study Council's annual law conference. This is an opportunity to hear from local school attorneys, and some of the presenters were our attorneys, and to hear them speak about recent changes in education law, recent court decisions, and other areas of concern for school districts. It's always an informative day, and the materials that they provide are a really good resource to keep on hand. I have requested a digital copy so that we can add that to the board's resources on Board Docs as a good reference document, and for a little light reading, if any trustees have extra time on their hands, I will let you know when I receive that. The board may have recognized, I believe our trustee district clerk sent an email today, that we have added to the agenda a proposal for a merger of the girls' swim team that will include both Kingston and Rondow. Ms. O'Donnell met with her colleagues in those districts this morning, and I think as sign-ups for the fall sports have progressed, all three districts have realized they don't have enough swimmers to each have their own team. So whereas we have previously, and we had proposed to shadow Kingston, and I believe Rondow also was in a shadowing position, we are now proposing a three-district merged team. So we added it to the agenda tonight, and we apologize for the short notice, but we did that because the practices start on August twenty-sixth, and our next meeting is not until August twenty-seventh. So, our swimmers would then not be able to have their first two practices with the rest of the team if we waited until the next meeting. And lastly, as you know, we have been offering virtual parent workshops throughout the year for the past several years. The parent participation has not been as robust as we would hope. So, we have created a survey to gather input from our families as to what topics they might like to see us focus on, and when is the most convenient time for them to participate in a virtual workshop. So this survey will be sent out this week, because we are hoping to continue to provide resources for our families and do it in a way that is the way that they would like to receive them and to focus on topics that they are most interested in.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Trustee Lynch?
Yeah, thank you so much. Can you just describe to me the difference, if there's any ramifications for us in terms of, you know, our responsibilities between shadowing and merging teams? You said we used to shadow Kingston, and now we're, the proposal is to merge. I'm just curious. What is, what does that actually mean in terms, is it a, a financial responsibility or some other responsibility?
It, it actually may end up being less of a financial responsibility, because as a shadow, we actually ran our own team. And so our team and coaches went with their teams and coaches. But I think one of the, one of the positives might be that our athletes will be able to be part of a bigger team. And they sort of were before, but not. They were not officially. That's my understanding. If, if it needs to be clarified, I will bring that back to you.
Thank you.
Of course.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you, Superintendent McLaren. On to board district news. Do any trustees have news to report? Trustee Lynch?
Sure, thank you. I also participated in two conferences and thought it might be helpful to give you an overview. At the direction of Trustee Bishop, there are several of us who went to the Rural School Board Association workshop, so potentially I'll just take two highlights and ask others to share different highlights, if that's okay. But most recently, I was part of a similar law conference. I did the NISBA Summer Law Conference, so it sounds like it was quite similar. On July twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, virtual participation was allowed, and so I took advantage of that. And I actually do have the soft copy, I get the digital copy, so I'm happy to share that with the, the district clerk to make sure everybody has access to it. Essentially, it was covering the school budget process, which was, you know, very helpful and timely, given where we are in the process. Also, new laws and regulations. So we talked about things that have already surfaced, including, you know, the completing FAFSA Title IX, teacher principal performance evaluations, school elections, polling place flexibility, the max temperature policy, the obligation to have a student board member, student ex officio. the obligation to have a student board member, student ex officio board member, which is something we've also already done. But the list was long, so I'll send you the slides. Those were the ones that I think were most familiar to all of us. There was also a section of the day spent on transgender and gender expansive student rights as well as a section on student discipline, both very informative and helpful as we think about our own policies and the work of our policy committee. From the RSA Conference, the Rural Schools Conference, that was July 15th and 16th. It's actually hard for me to choose too. I thought that they were quite, I have to say, actually, I was very impressed by some of the speakers at the plenary. They both, many of, there was a few that stood out to me, but they talked a lot about the role that we each play in a strong school district and they talked a lot about just leadership and visionary skills. And I thought it was so applicable as we're going through our own change process in this district. I'll maybe start with Mark Membreddy. He's Assistant Superintendent in East Aurora, which is just southeast of Buffalo. And he made a very strange but somewhat wonderful comparison to a school district and Disney World. And what he talked about was how important it is for each of us to be thinking about, what is your, what do you think about when you think about Disney World? Some people think that it's a magical place, that it's a happy place, that it brings families together. Others think about it as long lines, incredibly expensive, and, you know, far away from where you live, a far trip. And what, a school district could have the same impact on a family in terms of thinking about, you know, what we bring together in terms of obviously student impact and all the positive things when you think about your time at Antioa versus all the trouble that it can be to navigate a school system. And the intention that Walt Disney put into both the goals for Disney World and how, most importantly, every single person who works at Disney World wants to see the positive outcomes for a student's or a child's experience at Disney World. In our case, a student's experience here at Antioa. And he walked through some of that intentionality and I thought it was just really helpful to think about it in those terms. The most important thing that I thought about a lot and actually wrote it down was that he said, "We can't ask to teach the public and then complain when they show up to be taught." And I thought that that was so important as we think about our role as ambassadors for this school, obviously trustees first and foremost, but also thinking about, you know, how patient we are and how intentional we are and as we talk about the change in this community, what we want people to come away with and what we want their impression to be, no matter their viewpoint about any issue and make sure that we're good stewards of the communication role that we have. So that one really struck me as important and timely for us. The other one, I actually just joined the facilities committee, so I took a couple of opportunities to think about that new role. For me, I went to one on energy savings for schools, which shared, it was a breakout session and it shared all the new energy policies, like the high temperature limits and other policies that are coming our way that we need to consider as it relates to facilities. But it also talked a lot about incentives for schools. And there's several other policies, including the Inflation Reduction Act and the Clean Green Schools Initiative and others that are offering incentives to do, to be considered as you're thinking about these types of facilities and capital projects and facilities challenges. So I found that really helpful as well and I could go on, but I'll leave it there.
Thanks, trustee Lynch. Trustee Ramondo?
Okay, thanks, guys. Good evening, everyone. I apologize for the awkwardness of having a giant Megan in the room, but I appreciate being able to participate remotely and the extra legwork that had to happen to make it work. So trustee Bishop Goodrich and Hemingway Lynch and I were fortunate to be able to attend this year's Rural Schools Conference in Lake Placid. The Rural Schools Association is always seeking to bring current topics to attendees, which I'm thankful for as it's very hard to disseminate all that is happening around our state and country on any given day. So the two takeaways for me included the fact that AI is evolving at light speed and it is critical for our staff, students, and families to understand its uses and pitfalls through training, education, and discussion. Having a fear-based mentality around it and avoiding its presence in our daily lives is not the solution that helps our students become 21st century global citizens. We must work together with our students and staff to be proactive, respectful, and well-versed users of AI technology. So that was my first one, which was talked about in multiple sections. The second topic that was discussed by many attendees and speakers throughout the conference was student cellphone usage and access in school. It is my hope that during her listening tour with school officials and stakeholders, that Governor Hochul will develop a statewide policy that is logical, possible to enforce, and provide the support districts need to implement solutions with staying power. Principal Edelman emailed his update yesterday for the high school, which included his plan for the 24-25 school year, so it looks like we're moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Why don't you go first?
So I also attended the Rural School Association Conference there in Lake Placid. It was a great opportunity to discuss rural schools issues with other, you know, board members, superintendents. It was, it was great. And we're not the only ones having the similar problems, so it was good to see that. Couple takeaways, I got a long list of things that I emailed out to all the board members, but I just wanted to touch on a couple of them. School goals, you know, everybody talks about skills for our graduating students, you know, and we want to increase the graduation rate. But we should also consider success after graduating from high school. And there is a company called the Harvard National Center for Rural Education Research Network, or NCERN. And they actually collect data on students after they graduate. And they work with rural schools on trying to come up with plans to improve success rates after college or after, you know, after high school. So whether it's in college or non-college fields. So I left a link for that here in the email. It's, so it's, you know, if you search for N-C-R-E-N, you'll probably find it. Another one is Education Elements. It's a Scolaris Learning Company. They work alongside school districts to implement new instructional models for new strategic visioning. So given all the changes that we're planning here in this school district, it might be good to contact them to see if they can help us make sure that we're going to get good results from all the money we're about to spend. It's, they impressed me at the conference. I just want to also mention, we had a great discussion about artificial intelligence and I know our superintendent mentioned that and it's been all over the news lately. I've been working in computers for 45 years. I've seen lots of news articles and lots of things come across where this is going to be innovative. It's going to improve productivity by 10 times. And it really, you know, I looked at it, I actually took RPI classes on certain things like object-oriented modeling and design programming because it was supposed to be a 10x improvement. It didn't happen. AI scares me. That's all I'm going to say about that. And it's coming and we can't ignore it. It really is, it's here, the productivity is improved, is immense. We should be using it. One of the demos that I saw was the two school administrators, they have a desk facing each other and their job is to create IEPs. And they, they learn how to prompt the AI tool to generate IEPs. And they try one, you know, it's like a 30-word prompt and they try that and then if that doesn't generate it, they do another one. So if we're not using AI to do IEPs, we should, you know, look into that. So that's, that's very useful. The other, I'll just quickly say the gap between education and industry stats. 43% of the students starting post-secondary programs who earn a degree in six years. So only 43% of students starting post-secondary programs earn a degree in six years. 13% of students of low income, a quartile, earn a bachelor's degree in six years. 41% of recent grads working jobs that do not require a college degree. And micro-credentials are exploding in the private sector and may be seen by some students as a much more achievable goal. Thank you.
Okay, I'm just going to quickly discuss two issues that I thought were really interesting and important. And I attended the Rural Schools Conference, the New York State School Boards Association Leadership and Education Conference, and the New York State School Study Council Law Conference over the past two weeks. So my head is spinning a little bit. Two things that, and they have already been mentioned, but I just want to say, two things that really were impactful for me were the use of AI in education, both for students' use, to use AI as a tutor, you know, very effectively. We saw video proof of that. And then also the potential for using AI for teachers, to use AI for writing IEPs, for lesson plan development, for, actually for scoring essays and tests. And that was really interesting for me to hear from the same presenter in two different locations over a week. But then to hear the attorneys really caution us at the, on Friday, in the use of AI for things like IEPs, for things like even screening applicants for jobs in, you know, just the resume process. There is potential for huge legal implications, so we do really have to be careful with that. So I'm glad that you've entered into this group. You know, hopefully, we're going to learn a lot. And I mean, I do see potential in it, but I also see huge concern and caution. And then the other thing that really struck me and I heard at all three conferences that I attended was cellphone use. And the tie between student cellphone use and especially the use of social media and student mental health. Not only mental health, but academic performance and the negative impact that cellphone use has on academic performance. Just having a phone on your body can limit your access to learning. So I think those are two really important topics for me. And I know that, and it's interesting that we all had similar ideas and thoughts. So any other trustees have any news to report? Not all of us just bragging about our conferences that we went to. Trustee Knudsen?
This is more of a question, is that all right? I'm just struck by all the AI talk and a phrase that the superintendent used, which was drawing the line between leveraging AI and overrelying on AI. And I understand this can, for the teachers and the administration, this can be developed over time. For the families, this technology is out in the wild, right? So I think it might be helpful at some point to develop some presentation to parents with concrete examples of this is leveraging it in an appropriate way, this is overreliance. And a very sort of drawing a line for families because it's so easy to access now, you know, for students and obviously probably very tempting for some students to just rely on it too much.
Trustee Lynch?
Yeah, thank you for that. I agree. And I think the one big takeaway from the presentation that Bill Daggett gave, I think it's the same, the executive chair of Successful Practices Network. This is the gentleman who was at two conferences apparently in one same week, preparing students for their future, not the past. This is the name of his presentation. It was fantastic. And I think we should even consider reaching out to him if feasible. Who knows what his fees are and if it's practical, but I just thought his work was really, it's awesome. Okay, well, the one thing that he said, and trustee Knudsen then, is that there is this 80/20 rule. And I think that's something that's really important. Whenever we talk about AI, whether it's for families, for teachers, for staff, or administrators, you know, you can only rely on AI 80% of any project and 20%, you need to use the human brain, right? And I think that was prevalent in all of the presentations, but an important piece of what we took away from it.
Thank you, trustee Lynch. Any other questions, comments on board district news? All right. We are acknowledging the comments in public be heard at our last meeting from Rick Wolf. And I believe we do not have any speakers tonight. Okay. Onto item 8.01, committees. So we're establishing our board committees. And we discussed the establishment of our committees at our reorg meeting in July. And we agreed that we would communicate via email as we really kind of finalized our committee selection. So I'll just quickly read through the list that we have. And I can't remember, Amanda, do we have to vote on this or do we just have to agree in consensus? We have to vote, okay. So our audit committee will be represented by trustee Mitchell Morrell, trustee Knudsen, and trustee Goodrich. Our facilities committee would be represented by trustee Knudsen, trustee Lynch, and trustee Goodrich. Our district-wide safety committee, which only has a representation of one trustee, will be represented by trustee Goodrich. Health and Wellness Committee will be represented by trustee Ramondo and trustee Jerome. Policy Committee will be represented by trustee Ramondo, trustee Mitchell Morrell, and myself, trustee Bishop. Communications Committee will be represented by trustee Lynch, trustee Bishop, and trustee Jerome. And Legislative Action Committee will be represented by trustee Ramondo and trustee Bishop. May I have a first? Trustee Knudsen, second, trustee Lynch. Any conversation about this? Any questions or comments? Okay, so we will just do an all in favor. So all in favor of accepting those committee recommendations? That's unanimous. And Amanda, trustee Goodrich stepped out for a moment, so he was not a part of that vote.
Oh, I have a note here that we should discuss the scheduling of our meetings. And I just want to start the conversation by saying that I'm not available on Wednesdays, almost ever. And I'm only available on Fridays until 11:00. And so I don't know if, and just, I mean, it might just be a good idea to find out when people are available and not necessarily try to pin down actual days and times. Anybody else have constraints? Or we're talking about the committee, like the actual times that we might meet, or days that we might meet, or the times that we can't meet? Any any committee that you, I I, we just voted on the committees, and you've got the you've got the document in front of you. Okay, so I guess I'm the only one that I'm I'm not available on Wednesdays or Fridays after eleven. Wednesday all day, Friday after eleven.
Can I just make a quick comment? I'm sorry to interrupt. So what I would like is how often you would like the committees held, and then exactly whenever someone isn't available, so I can start to plan the committee's schedule around what you'd like and who is not available on certain days, because I I have no idea how often you'd like these hold held.
Okay. Trustee Lynch?
Thank you, yeah, I I agree. Maybe it's just the the frequency would be important to solve as far as a group. I myself work full-time, but with any kind of notice, I could try to be flexible. I just, I do have some standing meetings, which may be very tedious for me to go through the week right now in a public meeting, but I'm happy to do that with Amanda on a one-on-one.
Yeah, we could do a Google Doc, right? Okay. I mean, just Amanda, Audit Committee meets four times a year. And I believe they meet typically, they meet on Mondays, right? Monday mornings, Monica? How how often does Facilities meet? Okay, perfect. And the Districtwide Safety Committee? How often do they meet? Do you know? Once a quarter? Okay, so that should be pretty easy. Health and Wellness?
Monthly.
Okay. And commu- communications, I'm sorry, policy is monthly, pretty religiously. Communications is at least monthly.
Sometimes.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, many times it was twice a month. And then Legislative Action is really as needed. So it's around, you know, the hot times and hot topics. So Amanda, will you generate a Google Doc for us? Okay, great, thanks. Onto item nine point zero one, approve the safety plan. The Board of Education hereby approves the Districtwide Safety and Emergency Management Plan and safety team members for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five school year as attached. May I have a first? Trustee Goodrich, second, Trustee Mitchell Morrell. Any questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, that's unanimous. We have item nine point zero two. The Board of Education hereby approves the changes to the potential resolutions sent to the New York State School Board Associations as attached. May I have a first? Trustee Mitchell Morrell, second, Trustee Knudsen. Any questions or comments about that? All in favor? That's unanimous. Item nine point zero three, continued discussion on the board self-evaluation. I know that we we briefly discussed that in our reorg meeting. And I said that I would reach out to Bob Hartz at Super評 because I suggested using the Super評 Board Self-Evaluation Tool, which I I just love their product because it scores itself, we don't have to use paper and and then score rubrics. And I was just asked about the cost of that. So the cost of using the Super評 Board Self-Evaluation Tool is six hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And it is available, you know, once we sign that contract with them, it is available to us like for the whole school year. So we can use it for an initial self-eval, and then we can use it again, you know, more than once. So I don't know if that's something that we have to vote on. Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Have you done, is this whole concept of the board evaluating itself new?
I I don't think it's new to boards, but it's new to our board. And I don't know when when an Ontario school board evaluated itself last, but I've been on the board for three years and we haven't evaluated ourselves. And I I do think that it would be valuable to us to evaluate ourselves and then, you know, think about what's next. Because because I feel that that's the way that we can determine what professional development we want or need, you know, for ourselves, based on our evaluation. And and not only that, I'm sure that there's great value in it, even beyond that. Is that something we have to vote on, Amanda?
You would have to vote on the contract, not necessarily the discussion.
Okay. Trustee Lynch?
Thank you, yes, I agree. And I I just would hope that we could also time it with, and as we're talking about scheduling, but, you know, a retreat or a series of retreats. And I'm just curious how you're thinking about that, Trustee Bishop, so that it's a useful tool, meaningful tool, to progress some of our ongoing work around goals and other things.
Right. I think that the first step would be the eval. And then we plan a retreat after that to discuss the results of the eval and, you know, and then determine what, if any, professional development we wanna pursue. I I think that part of the eval will will probably address goals, or, you know, past goals and how we've done, you know, with goals. But moving forward, I think I'm hoping that we can start talking about our two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five goals very soon. Not tonight, but soon. Any other questions or comments about self-eval?
I mean, I'm generally pro self-valuation, but I would be curious just to hear from a board person somewhere who's used it, that it is beneficial maybe. Do you think there's anyone we could ask?
Okay, yeah, I'll reach back out to Bob Hartz and and ask him if he can, yeah, give us a reference.
Okay, great idea.
Megan, did you have your hand up?
I did.
Okay, sorry.
It's very weird, it's okay. No, I just wanted to say that in a lot of the board briefs that we've gotten, not board briefs, but our, the newsletter that we receive as a board trustee, that there's a lot of reference to a high-functioning board doing annual self-evaluations. So I think it's commonplace in high-function places that where boards want to be high-functioning and be successful. So I I'm very much for it. I just, I know that NISBA also has one, but it's a handwritten one. It's it's, it would be a lot to process it, it would be all done manually. So I'm I'm open to spending, you know, that amount of money to help us become as effective as possible. So I'm I'm all aboard.
Thank you. So we will get some feedback from Bob Hartz at Super評 before we go into contract. Is that okay with everyone? Okay, great. Item nine point zero four is the discussion of the future of the Phoenicia school building. And I'm going to propose that we we postpone that discussion until our next board meeting. Just because our first twenty-minute presentation actually went on for a little more than an hour. And with the weather, I I don't want anyone to have trouble getting home. And when I worry about the weather, it usually doesn't happen. So, you know, who knows what's gonna happen? Is everybody okay with that? Trustee Lynch?
I'm very okay with taking safety first, but it is a very important discussion, and so I'm really concerned that we're punting it another few weeks, and I'm not gonna be here at the next meeting. So selfishly, I'd prefer that we stay and do it, but open to discussion.
I'm also not gonna be here for the next meeting. The other thing is, I don't know, my thing says the rain's starting at like nine or nine-thirty. If we have different weather.
Okay.
Could we maybe postpone the board dashboard discussion instead?
Yeah, that's exactly what I was gonna propose. So why don't we, we'll go ahead with the Phoenicia discussion, and we'll postpone the board dashboard conversation until the first September meeting, because I know, Trustee Lynch, you were involved in that conversation too. Okay? Okay, great.
Okay, so I can start this discussion. So as the board knows, we have been in contact with the Shandaken Town Supervisor since last summer, and we've been kind of awaiting an indication of the direction that the town would like to take concerning their initial tentative interest in this building in sight. So this morning, the supervisor let me know that he is indicating the town will not move forward with a plan that includes the Phoenicia building. Although they recognize that there are many positives and possibilities with this site for the town, they also feel that there are too many challenges and challenges and conflicts. So they have decided to pass on the opportunity to work with us to take ownership of this building in any way. But also, in the past two weeks, Ms. Leclerc and I have participated in a couple of meetings. The first was an intergovernmental meeting during which we met with our county legislators as well as our town supervisors. In discussion, one of the legislators asked if the district could sell the property to the county so that they could work to create affordable housing in this area. So that was one interesting initial question. The other meeting we had was actually yesterday, and it was with the representatives from Pattern for Progress. Town of Shandaken has engaged Pattern to create their comprehensive plan. So as part of that process, they asked to meet with us because at that point, everyone thought that the Phoenicia building was a potential site that the town may want to include in their comprehensive plan. In conjunction with that meeting, or sort of simultaneously, we also received a copy of the report that Pattern for Progress just released titled Closed Schools, Open Minds. It is available online. I printed a copy for each board member, and I actually have a few extra copies up here if anybody would want them. It is a really interesting report with some very creative examples of how other communities have adapted closed school buildings for new purposes. I did share the report with our attorney for his thoughts because the recommended steps included at the back of the report seem to be somewhat counter to the guidance that we have received in terms of what is allowable for a school. And so the article and the process that they suggest at the end appears to be inconsistent with binding authority from the Court of Appeals and numerous commissioners' decisions, which explain that it is well-settled that when selling real property, a Board of Education has a fiduciary duty to secure the best price obtainable in the board's judgment for any lawful use of the premises. And our attorney has told us multiple times, and I've asked very specifically, could we put it out on the market with certain contingencies? Could we say we would prefer a purchaser who may do this or do that with the property? And it is very clear that that is not allowable. And so it's kind of contrary to what the report is suggesting. And the authors of the report felt that there were ways to do those things. I haven't gotten any any confirmation of how that would happen. But there is a means by which a district is able to sell property for less than fair market value, so long as the property will be used for a public purpose, which ties into what the legislator was asking us. So there is a nineteen seventy-nine Comptroller's Opinion, which clearly states that providing adequate, safe, and sanitary low-rent housing accommodations for persons and families of lower income is specifically declared by the legislature to be a public use and a purpose for which public money may be spent. So the Comptroller had determined that a private developer constructing federally subsidized housing on real property, which was conveyed conveyed in this case by the city, to the city by a school district, and then leased by the city to a private developer, was a public use. So that is one potential if the legislator, if the legislature actually wanted to pursue that with the district, but that would require voter approval. So really what the board has to contemplate at this point is, do we list the property? And basically, our obligation would be to obtain the best possible price. And pretty much, we have no authority to dictate what that property will be used for. Or if we wanted to pursue a conversation with the legislator who inquired about that in terms of would it be possible for the county to purchase the property from us and then try and get some low-income housing, then that would be another conversation that we could pursue.
Trustee Goodrich?
So if we wanted to sell it to the county or give them an opportunity, any idea how long it would take for them to make a decision?
I have, I've, I've not had a conversation with them. When we met with them, it was, I don't know that, it was just a natural byproduct of the conversation that it occurred to one of the legislators to ask if it was even possible. So I haven't gone back. But again, if we were to sell to the county for less than fair market value, it would require voter approval.
Thank you.
If the board is is interested, we can follow up with the legislator who inquired and then see if there if there's a viable interest there or or if that was just a a wonder.
Are you looking for a vote today or?
I'm not looking for a vote, I just wanted to have a discussion, and I wanted to bring everybody up to date, especially given that the town notified us today that they will not be pursuing this property. So I I thought it was really important to bring that information forward and give the board an opportunity to have some conversation, maybe provide follow-up questions like that, that we could go do a little more research on and bring back more information. I don't wanna rush anyone into anything, and certainly, this is a really important decision. So this will, I'm I'm anticipating that this will be the first of many conversations.
Trustee Ramondo, then, Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Thank you. I would love for you to go back and try to continue that conversation on our behalf with the county representative. Thank you.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell? Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Maybe this is obvious to say, but I'll say it anyway. Phoenicia area is such a popular second-home destination. I guess the worst-case scenario would be a developer who millions of dollars isn't really a big deal to them, make it like more high-income housing, or a hotel or something. And that doesn't help us with enrollment, it doesn't help us with anything. And I guess that would be like a very, like, possible worst-case scenario. So, I also am in favor of the county version.
Trustee Knutson?
Yeah, this is a question that is maybe unlikely to arise, but it might be an interesting question to ask the lawyer, which is, if we did list it and we ended up with two competing offers, one that we liked better, how much of a delta between the two offers would be considered irresponsible from a fiduciary perspective? Like, you know, if it was, make it extreme, like a pesticide plant and a, you know, versus a affordable housing, and it's a dollar difference? Nobody could fault us for going with, you know, it's not gonna be a dollar difference, but as if it's a thousand, if it's 10,000, if it's, you know, 100,000, you know, within what sort of parameters do we have discretion to choose among offers?
Trustee Lynch?
Thank you. Yeah, I would also be keen to understand from the legislator that you spoke with, what other public purpose they may be interested in?
I can, I can confirm with the attorney, but my understanding is housing is the only one that is qualified.
Okay, okay. Thank you. When you say housing is the only one that qualifies, that's if it's sold to the county?
Yes.
Trust, oh, I'm sorry. Trustee Knutson?
Yeah, so I, just to follow up on what Megan said, I think the next logical step is to explore the county, to see if that's even a possibility. And then, you know, because that will inform future steps.
Can you just give us a rehash? There was a lot there, and I was taking notes, which was a little distracting to myself. But the conversation you had with Patterns for Progress?
The conversation that we were having with them revolved around their engagement as the town's creator of their comprehensive plan. They're embarking on this process, they're anticipating it may take as much as eight, as long as 18 months. And they were wanting to consider the Phoenicia Building as part of potentially the town's comprehensive plan. But the town has since let us know that they are not gonna move forward with our property as part of their plan, so.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, suggestions? Trustee Lynch?
Yeah, maybe just one more idea than when we, when you do go back to the legislator is also to ask for examples of other similar arrangements. I'm thinking about, like, I'm forgetting what it was, the Best Westerner was that was taken over by RUPCO, and they also have a childcare facility and low-income housing there. It's a phenomenal project. I mean, is that an example of what we're talking about? Or are there others that they may be able to help us visualize, so to speak, when they think about what it would mean for the county to take on a project like this and offer low-income housing? I think it would just be helpful to see some examples.
And I was curious if we've had any conversation at all with RUPCO? And if that, you know, is something that we would pursue?
I don't believe we have the authority to pursue that. If we're gonna sell, we need to sell to the highest bidder, unless it's going to be to the county for public use.
Trustee Goodrich?
Although, I don't really want the school to be a landlord, but if we do decide to lease it rather than sell it, do we have restrictions? Can we restrict who we lease it to? Can we pick and choose, you know, who we want to be tenant?
I believe we could. We did, we would then still have to get fair market value. We'd have to get the best, the best price.
Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
Okay, so, if we sell it to the county, first of all, price is determined by the county?
So, we either have to sell for fair market value, or if we're going to sell for less than fair market value, we would negotiate that, but it would be subject to voter approval for the whole district.
Okay, and then, the county would decide what to do with it in terms of public use? Or, like, that would be up to them? Or would we get to say, or the vote?
No, we would not get to say what they could or couldn't do. But my understanding from what the, what our attorney had shared with us is that to be declared a public use, it is housing.
Okay, definitely housing. It doesn't necessarily be like anything else.
That's my understanding.
There's a lot listed on here.
Anything else at the moment? Trustee Mitchell Morrell?
So, when are we gonna vote on this? Or do we, like, how is it, what happens next? Yeah, what? Or like, do we eventually vote on this?
Eventually, yes. But either I or Assistant Superintendent Leclerc will go back to that legislator and get a sense of whether that was. I don't believe it was an offer that had any background behind it, but it was a very, very open conversation, and we're trying to be creative and think outside the box and collaborate, which was the whole idea of having the intergovernmental meeting. So, now that, now that the town has declined, we can move on to other ideas. And that does seem to be one of the more creative, community-minded ideas. So, we will reach out and see if there is any way that we could maybe move that one to the forefront.
I think also, if you're looking forward to support on this bond, and you can show, like, we don't just let our buildings rot or become unaffordable housing, you know, ultimately, that would help us in many ways.
Yes, collaborating is good, for sure. So, Superintendent, you're gonna have some conversations, right? And we, you know, should be thinking about this and bringing ideas and thoughts and questions back to our next meeting, you know, as things come up. Write it down, keep notes, because this will be a long, I think this will be a long conversation. Yeah? Okay, good. So, just discussion for tonight. Anything else before we move on? Trustee Goodrich?
Yeah, I've been looking at the weather report. It doesn't look too bad. But if it turns out to be bad, don't blame me.
So, is everybody okay with putting off the dashboard discussion until our first meeting in September? I think Trustee Jerome had some part in that conversation as well, or was excited to talk about it, so, okay? All right. Do we have to vote on tabling something, Amanda? Okay, so, may I have a motion to postpone item 9.05? Which was a discussion on creating a board dashboard? First is Trustee Goodrich, second, Trustee Mitchell Morrell. And we will postpone that until the first meeting in September. Okay, we're not gonna write in stone tonight what meeting we're moving it to, but we will vote on moving it. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Okay, item 9.06, NISBA Liaison. So, this is a responsibility that Trustee Lynch has had for a year or two. And it's, I think, really somebody who just keeps us informed of what's happening on the NISBA front, and much of that is done via email, forwarding important emails and things like that. And my first question is, would you continue, or would you be willing to continue in that role, Trustee Lynch?
Yes, absolutely. Happy to. I think it's actually, I'm just trying to think of, and many of the times that I did even forward things, it was things you all got anyway. So, I'm trying to think of any way to help our new trustees understand the role, but it's really just about keeping an eye on the, it's mostly the legislative processes that are happening. I know I stepped off the Legislative Action Committee, but I'm very happy to continue to forward things to you and Trustee Ramondo, and of course, the entire board when relevant.
Great, thank you so much. So, the Board of Education hereby approves Sarah Hemingway Lynch to the Board of Education Liaison for New York State School Board Association. May I have a first? Trustee Mitchell Morrell, second. Trustee Knutson? All in favor? Trustee Mitchell Morrell voting?
Yes.
Trustee Lynch, yes? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. We have time for a break. Would we like to take a break? No? Okay, we're gonna forfeit our break. Onto item 11.01. The Board hereby approves items numbers 11.02 through 11.10. May I have a first? Trustee Mitchell Morrell, second. Trustee Knutson? Any questions or comments? I will let everybody know that Trustee Jerome reviewed the Schedule U and said that everything appeared to be in order. All right? All in favor? That's unanimous. Onto item 12.01. The Board of Education hereby approves the ICRs, the Independent Contract Retainers, and contracts in items 12.02 through 12.11. May I have a first? Trustee Mitchell Morrell, second. Trustee Goodrich? Any questions or comments? All in favor? That's unanimous. Onto item 13, old business. Do we have any old business to discuss? Any new business? Trustee Goodrich?
So, I thought a number of us that were at the Rural School Association Conference were pretty impressed with the Harvard National Center for Rural Education Research Network to possibly provide data on our graduation, on our students that have graduated, and see how we're doing after they leave school. What would be the next steps in maybe contacting them and hiring them to provide, you know, to work with us? How would that work?
Well, I think that it would be something that the administration would have to, you know, take the lead on, but I'm not 100% sure on that. You know, it could be a suggestion from us, but I did not have a conversation with them, so I guess we'd all need more information.
We can look into what they have and how it could fit into where we are, and bring some information back.
I mean, it's possible it may be redundant from everything else you're doing, but this sounds definitely like it's new information, a new data point.
Trustee Lynch?
Thank you. Along the same lines, and actually, I was gonna bring this up in the discussion that we've tabled, so I know we'll get to it. But I just was thinking, there was also a broader discussion about data and data collection, so I just wanna make that link for all of us in terms of an upcoming discussion and the importance of data. But I also, some of us were in a conversation with Franklin Covey, and they've reached out to follow up with us as well. So, that was more, for your context, Superintendent McLaren, that was more about using current data teams and thinking about how we align our long-term plan and our own goals with the data that we already collect, including even having students participate in their own, setting their own goals, and how they hold themselves accountable to their own goals. It was a really fascinating program. And wondered if we could maybe consider a larger data discussion that includes your good point too, Trustee Goodrich? Because I think there was so many presentations that talked about the use of data for good, and I'm just hoping that we can pull them all, pull those threads together. But I recognize that it would take some follow-up with some of these vendors to better understand what they would offer that we don't have, versus what we already do have or could use without their help.
Trustee Ramondo?
I was just gonna say, I have the handout from the group that Clark was, or Trustee Goodrich was speaking about, but he did send a link for us. So, I can, when I get home tomorrow, I can forward that to people as well.
Great, thank you. Trustee Goodrich?
Yeah, it's in my email, but I don't think it got sent out, so I'll resend it here.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other new business? Trustee Lynch?
Yeah, I had another question for new business, or a new idea. I was just wondering, aligned with Governor Hochul's listening tour on cellphone usage, if we could request the administration to consider a similar plan? Could the administration, or even a combination of stakeholders, potentially teachers and/or policy committee members, or whoever is appropriate, conduct a listening tour with our own students? policy committee members, or whoever is appropriate, conduct a listening tour with our own students and staff and potentially other schools like Kingston who've already gone through, or about to go through, a different cellphone policy implementation plan? As I understand, they already started with their summer school and they've learned a lot at Kingston, and I'm just curious if there's a, a way that we could be thinking about benefiting from their experience and also getting our own stakeholders' involvement and engagement in, before any policy gets passed statewide, we could have our own sort of idea of what we want the, the implementation to look like here at Antioa.
Any other new business? Any requests for information? Trustee Lynch?
Yeah, I'm just really pleased to hear that the intergovernmental meeting occurred this summer, Superintendent McLaren, I wondered if it would be appropriate to share any of the agenda or outcomes with the board?
I'm, I'm so sorry, I'm trying to remember if we took, it was just a very large roundtable discussion, and I'm trying to picture if I have minutes or, not minutes, but notes, so if I have anything, I will certainly share them. But it was, it was a lovely meeting and everyone agreed that we wanted to continue and include the legislators, because it really added to the, the context and the amount of topics that we had to discuss.
Any other RFIs? Trustee Goodrich?
So just to be clear, on the, the process going forward for the proposition for the bonds, so the board will vote on the propositions first bef, to approve them and then before it goes to the voters, right? So we would, in essence, be voting twice on it, I guess. Well, we vote as a trust, as a trustee, and then we vote as a public, member of the public. Is that correct?
You would vote to create the proposition that will go in front of the voters?
Any other RFIs?
Can you just say when that vote is going to be?
It's in the timeline, when would that vote be?
December, or, because I always thought it was December 2024, right?
No, it would be in March of 2025.
March 2025, okay, thank you.
Before we adjourn, I have a thank you note, and I, for the second time, I forgot to read this during Board District News. This is to the Antioa Board. "It was my, it was very meaningful to me to receive recognition of my retirement at the June 18th meeting with sincere gratitude and appreciation. The gift I received is also appreciated. I found a perfect spot at home to display it. Thank you for the clock and the acknowledgement. Sincerely, Rose Haran." I feel better having read it. Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn? Trustee Mitchell Morrell, second. Trustee Knutson, all in favor? All right, we'll see you on August 27th.